You get a new phone there? Are you ready?
It looks new.
And?
It's quite new. It looks newish.
Yeah, they are all the new phone. We got new phones.
Can you please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you and good evening. Tonight's Tuesday, October 24th. It's eight o'clock. Apologize for the late start. We are experiencing technical difficulties, but we have it all solved now, so we're good to go. So, uh, the first item on our, we just came from executive session where we discussed non-union compensation. First item on our agenda is a, is our audit report. Please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, all. Uh, my name is Scott Oling. I'm a partner with PKF O'Connor Davies. I'm joined tonight, uh, by Carolyn Koff, who was the manager, uh, in charge of the day-to-day, uh, work on the audit with Trish and the finance folks and, and Chris, uh, as well. And, uh, we have a very brief presentation. It's about a dozen slides or so. I'm gonna have Carolyn take you through the wordy communication part, uh, that we have to do, and then I'll take you through some of the highlights of the, uh, what happened financially in the village. Uh, this is all for the fiscal year that ended, uh, May 31st, 2023. Carolyn?
So the first slide is our responsibilities as auditors, which is ensuring that you are following GAAP and any laws and regulations that coincide with that, um, along with any internal control deficiencies that we would find during the audit, which there were none. Um, we also look to make sure that accounting policies and applications are being followed, which they were.
If I can go, yeah, try and speak into the microphone if you don't mind.
And, uh, the last thing on this slide is indicating any fraud or illegal acts that we found. Uh, we did note one attempted ACH wire fraud, which the village was able to cover entirely. The next slide is management's responsibility, which is pretty much the same except for following, um, and enforcing everything. And then most importantly to us is providing all of the financial records and related information, which Trish and her office are always great at doing and a pleasure to work with. The next one is your responsibilities and management's, which are just communicating with us and overseeing all the financial activity throughout the year, as well as setting the proper tone at the top. And the final one, and maybe the most important, is that you, the village received an unmodified opinion, which is also known as a clean opinion. And as I noted before, there were no internal control deficiencies, and all the estimates and judgments that the finance office uses were deemed appropriate for us, and there were no unresolved matters or any disagreements with management throughout the audit.
Now I get to do the juicy stuff. Here come the numbers. Which is really the most important part. So this is a very, very high-level summary of the, uh, general fund activity for the year ended May 23. Uh, more detailed information, of course, is in the full, uh, audit report. So the first line are the revenues that support, uh, the village's operations. And you could see from both the original budget and some amendments that are made during the year to that, uh, original adopted budget. You anticipated revenues of approximately $23 million from a variety of sources like property taxes and state aid and county sales tax and various charges for services, fees, parks programs, those kinds of things. So the good news is when you look in the third column under the actual results, you took in just over $25.1 million. So the variance in the last column shows a positive $1.8 million. You did $1.8 million more in revenues than you thought you were going to do. Very good news. That really came from about three or four, uh, areas. Sales tax. So you get distributions from the county, uh, for its sales tax. Sales tax, we audit the county. Sales tax is way up for the county. So your share of that goes up. They share about 25% or so of the sales tax they collect with the school districts and all the municipalities, uh, in the county, except the big cities like New Rochelle and Yonkers. They, they have their own sales tax, uh, deal. So, uh, your sales tax this year was up about $700,000, uh, you know, compared, uh, to budget. You had estimated about $1.9 million. You took in about $2.6 million. Another big area where you did much better than budget was interest income. Obviously, when this budget was adopted, interest rates were still near zero, and a year later, interest rates are at the highest they've been in 15 years or, or so forth. Um, so you did about $340,000 better than budget in interest income. You, you collected about $420,000 versus an estimate of about $80,000. You also took in FEMA money, uh, for some various damages and, and things over the past. You didn't budget any money for the FEMA, and it came in at about $350,000. And then lastly, you also took in police fees, uh, for various, uh, services that the police department, uh, performs, uh, usually for private, you know, entities like a Verizon or Con Ed or, or something like that. Uh, you had estimated about $310,000. That came in at about $450,000. So you did about $142,000 better than your plan. So that's, you know, a big story as to why revenues came in about $1,008,000 better than you expected. So that's part one. The next line is expenditures, what you planned on spending the money on. And again, you anticipated spending approximately $23 million. And you could see you actually did spend about $22.5 million. So you only have about a $700,000, you know, savings in the budget. So the spending side of the budget, to me, is relatively tight. Uh, it's within, I think, 2.5% to 3%, you know, of what you, you estimated.
3.09.
3.09.
But who's counting?
But who's counting?
Uh, there was some savings, uh, you know, in the, uh, police department. Uh, you expected to spend about $4.5 million, spent about $4.4 million. There was some savings in sewer district costs, um, about $90,000. And then, you know, the rest of it is just spread throughout the budget. So it's, it's, you know, a really, you know, a really tight budget. When, when you come within, you know, 2% or 3% of, of a 20, you know, $3, $24 million budget, uh, that, that, that's pretty good. Uh, going down a little further on this page, there's trans, there's a line called transfers out. This is money that each year you move to your capital projects fund. Uh, each year you budget to do, you know, somewhere around a million and a half dollars' worth of capital projects that you do without borrowing money. Uh, you know, smaller type projects, but rather than borrowing money and incurring now higher interest costs, you're doing that from, you know, your operating budget essentially each year. And we'll see what you're doing again in, in, uh, 2024, uh, when we get to the next slide. So when you look at the bottom of the first two columns, you see a negative, uh, $1.4 million. So when you adopted this budget for this year, you expected to spend $1.4 million more than you were gonna take in. Most of that came from what we call appropriating fund balance, which is what you did. Each year, you, you set up money to, to transfer to capital. You use some of it for, uh, debt service, uh, purposes to help offset some of the debt service costs. So that's really what the $1.4 million is. The good news, though, in the actual column, the third number up from the bottom, is not only did you not deplete fund balance, but you actually added, you could see, $1.1 million, primarily driven by the, the really positive revenue, uh, results. So that's what you see. The variance in the last column on that line is $2.6 million. You did $2.6 million better than your plan. If you came in on plan, fund balance would've gone down $1,004,000. Not only did it not go down $1,004,000, but it went up $1,001,000. So that's very good. You started the year with, as you could see, about $10.6 million in, uh, fund balance to start the year. So you ended the year with $11.7 million in fund balance. So now on the next, uh, slide is how we allocate that $11 million of fund balance, because it's not just one number, "Hey, we got $11 million of fund balance. Let's party." It doesn't work that way. You can't do that. Um, so you see the $11.7 is all the way at the bottom in the first column. And fund balance is made up of different slices of pizza or slices, pots, different, uh, you know, buckets of, of money. Uh, there's a very small amount of the $11 million in the first group called non-spendable fund balance, and it basically means what it says. You really can't spend it. Uh, it's $34,000, mostly in prepaid items. So you're paying for stuff that was really benefiting next fiscal year, but the cash went out the door before the, the fiscal year started. So we kind of lock up that money, uh, as non-spendable. Uh, the next area is restricted fund balance. So these restrictions, you know, are generally established by, you know, uh, the village board. Uh, none of these can happen without, uh, village board approval. And the biggest piece that's in this is the $1,005,000 is the, uh, the debt service components. So you have essentially almost $1,001,000 available to help offset future debt service costs for '24, '25 fiscal year and beyond. And what you did was you used $300,000 in your '23, '24 budget that you're in. So you use that to provide tax relief, uh, and you're using some of your savings to help pay the debt service that is due this year on, on all your outstanding debt. And then you also have $188,000 set aside, uh, for the playing field, uh, you know, for future renovations there. So you got $1.5 million of the total. $11.7 million is restricted for those purposes. The next section is what's called committed. So you folks on the board have committed this money in the future to be used for capital projects. So you have, the first number, the $1.5 million, is available for years beyond '23, '24. And what you did was you used $1.2 million in the budget you're in now, in '23, '24. So you're gonna be transferring this money in the year you're in now to the capital fund to do the projects that you earmarked, uh, this year. That's the $1.2 million. You then have some money assigned, which is basically for, uh, open purchase orders that were not completed at May 31st. Uh, so those just roll over and amend the budget you're in right now, probably all spent already, $65,000. So what that basically means is your free and clear fund balance, it's not earmarked for anything, is about $7.2 million. So again, you know, on a budget of, you know, approaching $25 million, you know, you're looking at about 30%, unless you have the exact amount. So $7.2 million, you know, for this size budget is a very healthy fund balance. You know, it's there for emergencies. Obviously, there's always stuff going on here with, with flooding and, and all that kind of stuff. So it's a very strong fund balance position, uh, to be in. So, uh, very, very good results. That, that number's up about $660,000 from that same number, uh, last year. So again, as I mentioned, you added about $1.2 million in total fund balance. $660,000 was added to this unassigned portion. You had about $400,000, uh, more in the committed for capital projects portion, and you had about $90,000 more in, in restricted fund balance. And that's kind of how we get to, uh, what happened this year. So now, just to wrap up some of the financial numbers, just to show, uh, you, at May 31st, you had outstanding debt, both short-term debt and long-term debt. Short-term debt in the form of what we call bands, bond anticipation notes. And in that first chart, you see that you have three bond anticipation notes, essentially. It's really under one, but it's broken out into three different purposes. There was, uh, money for sanitary sewer improvements, the aerial fire truck, and then various other, uh, miscellaneous capital projects that, that you, you know, borrowed on a short-term basis. You have what the interest rates were, and at the end of the year, you had about $1.7 million, uh, outstanding. And I believe this band was renewed in the current year for about $1.1 million as you continued to make, uh, paydowns on that, uh, outstanding debt. And then from a long-term perspective, you have essentially two bonds out there. They're all from the same year back in 2018, an A, an A bond and a B bond. The B bond was for tax, uh, shiraris, the big tax cert that hit in, in 2018 that affected the village and the school. Uh, that one had a, you know, has a 10-year life, so you're halfway through that one. Has a balance of $830,000. And then for, you know, various big capital projects from, you know, the 2018 timeframe, there is still about $12.6 million, uh, remaining on that. These are fixed interest rates, which now in the current interest rate environment are looking pretty good.
And that was mostly the, uh, public works garage, public works and bars garage.
Yeah, we got that in at the right time.
Right. And that bond, because of the life of the project, you know, that we're funded by it, you know, goes all the way out to 2048. So it's a 30-year, uh, bond.
So those other, the bands are, um...
Bands are one year.
Right.
So you renew them each year.
Thank you.
And, you know, the interest rates obviously, uh, fluctuate with, you know, with the market rates, uh, you know, each year. So obviously, the interest rates are a little higher now than, you know, if you looked at these bands two years ago, they were probably under 1%.
Yeah.
I guess we can come to the first one, huh?
Uh, the next slide really has no effect on anything, uh, but it's in your financial statement. It's not really part of the general fund, but we have to report elsewhere in the financial statement what your, what we call other post-employment benefit liability is, or OPEB liability. This is an actuarial calculation that takes a present value of your future benefit obligations to provide health insurance to your retirees. So that include, that calculation includes if you have a 25-year-old employee, you know, and they stay here for 30 years, and they're gonna get a retirement, uh, health benefit, what the health insurance will cost in 30 years, and present value back to today. So they estimate that the village's liability at, at May 31st is $59 million. Uh, it can't be funded, not like the pension plan where you send money to the state pension plan, and they have billions in assets to pay retirement. Right now, New York has no mechanism other than pay-as-you-go. So you get the bill each month, you pay the health insurance. But maybe someday the state will allow, you know, entities to, to set up like an irrevocable trust. And if you have leftover money somehow at the end of a given year, you'd be able to put money in a trust, let it, you know, be invested, let it grow, and it would help pay, you know, health insurance down the road for, for retirees. So, just a thought. So lastly, uh, again, just communicating some internal control, uh, matters. Uh, there are three levels as auditors we have to look at. The lowest level are like miscellaneous-type low-level control deficiencies that we find, so we, we just provide information on that. If you move up to the next level for significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, those are really bad things if you're doing things, you know, in the accounting function that, that are not good. And, uh, thankfully, we, we've not reported, uh, anything in, in, in those categories to you. And with that, I think that pretty much ends my, an hour presentation. So I guess we'd be glad to take any questions that you have.
Is anybody, it has nothing to do with our audit. I'm thrilled with it. We are so lucky to have Chris and the rest of our managers who make this look easy, and we know it's not. So would you say that, that we're in great shape?
Yes, you, you guys are in very good financial shape here, yes.
And I'm gonna, I'm gonna mention Trish and her team, who are just rock stars in these areas. They just do a great job, uh, keeping us, keeping our finances in check and also just thinking out of the box and just really trying to shore everything up in every way possible. So thanks to Trish, thanks to her whole team. They just do a great, great job day in and day out. So thank you.
I'm sure not everybody looks this good.
No.
Great job.
We're very...
That'll be executive session.
That being said, is there any kind of lobbying, uh, to the, uh, local, not local government, the state government, to allow that kind of mechanism going forward?
You know, I think...
Because that seems like a, a logical step.
You know, I think there was legislation many, many years ago, maybe Chris remembers. I think it was around 2008 or '10 to, to, to set something up again, maybe on a statewide basis, to allow municipalities to put money in like they do for the pension. You know, the state has billions of dollars in pension, uh, money to do it for, for health insurance. Other states do it. I know Connecticut, uh, some of the municipalities have, you know, these trust funds. You know, obviously, once you put the money in it, uh, there's no getting it back. If you start running into financial problems. But you're gonna pay for it anyway. I think there was potential legislation a, a decade or plus ago, and then the state ran into its fiscal crisis at, at that time, and it just never went anywhere.
Put the brakes on.
It just got dropped, you know, because municipalities, you know, didn't have any money.
They don't have the money to put into it anyhow.
You know.
That could be an optional type thing.
Yeah, it could be. You wouldn't have to put money in, you know, each year if you, if you didn't have it. But, you know, it's a way to save for future, because the idea is you're using current money. You know, if, if I was, I'm not a 25-year-old, you know, employee here, I've earned 1/30th of that retirement benefit that you're gonna start paying me in 30 years. But it's a way to get essentially taxpayers today, who are getting that, you know, who that person is doing the work for, pay for it, rather than the taxpayer 30 years from now, who never got the benefit of that employee's, you know, work. That, that's really the concept.
So just kind of tying a couple of items together, just to, if you don't mind, I can, some of the things we look for is particularly, we're very leery of overtaxing. Uh, you wanna over, overcharge, over-collect in terms of property taxes on residents. So we're very happy with the, the 3% staying within our, for our, uh, estimates for our expenditures. We think that's really excellent. And the revenue side of it, we also like to stay, you know, 2% to 4% in general. So you look at those extra areas and say, okay, what's going on there? So obviously, the police revenue is, is all the utility work, which we have an expense side to that as well. Uh, the FEMA was a, is a reimbursement and a few, uh, from the prior year. You're not getting to get that again. That was just something that was just a lag in the payment, really, from FEMA and the paperwork, um, on, on FEMA's end, not on our end. Interest income, who expected that? And sales tax was higher. So, you know, those were all, you can look at it and explain and say, this all makes sense. And then what do we do? Then, how we carry that forward to our budget is that money above our financial policies, we then designate for capital projects so that we have a, we have, we've had this recurring, uh, amount while we still keep an adequate fund balance there. Excess fund balance above the policies then gets put into a designated for capital to make sure that those expenses, we can make sure we're reinvesting in our infrastructure. So that, that policy and procedures have, have held us well over the years. So, you know, we're pleased to see, and where we get additional revenue, that's what it'll be used for.
Great.
Any other questions, comments? Thank you for providing this, and, and I'll also back everyone else's words about how lucky we are to have Chris and Trish and everyone involved, because it really makes a big difference, you know, when you're trying to govern a municipality. You know, it really makes a big difference knowing that the, the structure is there and the, the people are in place to make sure that they're, they're running a sound ship. Thank you.
We have resolution.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm gonna move right into the resolution before we get to our next, uh, so, to our next, uh, report. And this is resolution number one, considering approving the fiscal year 2022, '23 audit report.
Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the fiscal year 22, '23 audit report provided by PFK O'Connor Davies.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion? Second, please. All right, I think it speaks for itself. Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein? Yes, thank you. All right, moving on to our second, uh, report, our second presentation. Uh, this is a Westchester Power program update.
Hi, everybody.
Hi. And we should mention, Mayor, that the, one of the reasons that Westchester Power keeps coming back is there, you know, we've expressed to the residents, we want to make sure everyone's remaining. We said in the beginning, we want to keep people updated on the progress and what any of the, where we are on Westchester Power, what the rates are, what your options are. So this is just a continuing educational program to tell people where we are at different points in the program.
Great. We appreciate that, and Dan, we appreciate you being here.
No, thanks for inviting and happy to have you do this. You indicated we don't need the big, you know, intro with all the environmental imperatives and all that. But just for program identification for people out in the audience, this is the, the...
Do you mind moving the mic closer? Thank you.
This is the, um, uh, bulk purchasing program, if you will, that's participated in by, uh, Rybrook and many other communities. And it's about driving renewable energy uptake, stabilizing rates, and providing a platform for building more, uh, programming in the, in the clean energy space. Uh, the key characteristic of it is that it's an opt-out format, which basically means, uh, you're in unless you raise your hand to, to, uh, come out of it. And it should always be understood that as a fixed-rate program, the savings aren't guaranteed because we don't know what the utility rate is going to be in the future. So, uh, and again, uh, Ry, Rybrook is one of 29 municipalities that are participating in the program. And there's about 140, more like 145,000, um, residents and small businesses in it. So the current contract goes until the end of next year, well, till the end of October in next year. Um, 2024 is currently at 15.128 cents for the renewable energy option, which is the default product. Uh, each community that participates picks a product to be the default. And again, in that opt-out scenario, uh, taking no action puts you in the default product, but you can switch to the standard supply. That's 13.364 cents. And, um, this just also for a little bit of additional context, pulled at the, um, numbers in terms of the, uh, number of accounts participating in Rybrook. And we get this month-to-month add-drop report. So at the end of September, we're at about 2,600 in that. Uh, I went and grabbed the, the census for households in, in Rybrook is, uh, 3,377. So that's about 75% of the households roughly. Uh, you take, there's small business accounts in the program as well, but it's quite small. In Rybrook, it's like less than 10 or something. You've seen this graph before, this is, or, you know, something, something like it. This is the history of the rates, and the blue bars are the utility rates. The horizontal bars are the Westchester Power rates, the lower one, of course, being the, the lower price standard rate, and the upper one being the, um, uh, the renewable rate. Uh, what I wanted to do, though, is kind of give some, um, context of why, you know, what is all that noise of the up and down of the market here? And in the past, I think we've noted that the, the electricity pricing is generally driven by natural gas pricing. Um, it's not the only thing out there, but it is the price setter for, for the market. So this curve, and you don't have to, don't worry about the numbers on the, on the left side, you know, it's different units. But, but the movement of the market, uh, I've laid out over where the utility rates were. And you can see that as a matter of, uh, so as we go along in the, uh, the curves there, in the initial part of the program when we first launch, doesn't look that stable, but that's relatively stable. It's not shooting up or downwards for, for as much as we've seen in, in recent times. And, and through the, that contract, we ended up doing pretty well in that. This few years later, we hit the, the fracking boom. You'll remember when all these wildcatters are out there drilling everywhere and anywhere, and, uh, the market just crashed. We had just signed a new contract, so we were kind of hanging out there above the market for, for a good period of time. More recently, uh, in 2021, the end of 2021, we started seeing a big increase in exports of natural gas, and that's going out to markets where natural gas is like three times many multiples the, the price that it is here in the United States. That's pulling the price up, and we're seeing these, these, uh, ri, price rises, and they're starting to reflect in the electricity price markets. Not too long after that, you get the start of the Ukraine war, and now we've really got a, a mix there, and you're seeing those spikes, and you're seeing the, the market get a little, a little crazy. And so this is the market we're, we're in at that point when we're trying to secure a new bid. Remember, we had that, there was that gap there. That was the pause. You, you know, we had set a target, and off the market goes, and we, we missed that. Uh, so, so that's how we got where we are today. And now the question is, so, so here we are. I'm sure people are trying to, trying to, uh, you know, get some sense about where things are going. And, you know, the question that, for me, is always, basically, we don't know, but here are the, the factors that, that come into play. And I pulled this out of, uh, the Constellation folks. They're the suppliers. They do a, a regular kind of economic market update thing. Uh, it's filled with all kinds of crazy graphs and all the rest of that. But this, I thought was a good visual to just sort of get a sense of, you know, what, what's going on and what's affecting, uh, the price and what the, the anticipated movements are. what's going on and what's affecting the price and what the anticipated movements are. The winter right now is supposed to be fairly mild. There's this El Nino phenomenon that's rolling up. And that tends to have a modifying effect on the temperatures. Economically though, we are still fairly hot and that's tending to drive things up. The production of natural gas is starting to drop back however, because there's been some dropout of people with the low pricing. And also the storage has been up, so people are just, you know, slowing down now. And the storage is very high. When you have a high level of storage, that tends to depress the prices. Then you, of course, you've got more things going on in the global situation, which throw that situation into confusion. You've seen oil prices start to head up. And obviously not the same as natural gas, but they are sort of fungible at some level. And they start to pull on each other. So that's tending to push prices up. And then again, on the production of the liquefied natural gas, that's tending to push the prices up as well as it, as there's a little bit of a constraint on that. So overall, their assessment was that there's, in total, there's still a pressure downwards on prices. So we're not expecting things to go wild, but that could change. You know, when they talk about the weather, they're always hedging. You have some cold front or some blockage and then all of a sudden, things change. And of course, the global situation, who knows about that? So there is some level of uncertainty, but that's just a sense. Again, people participating in the program, you know, they're going to have their own criteria. Obviously, number one for us is trying to increase the uptake on renewable energy. But people want to be able to think about these things in terms of the economics, where it's going, whether they should stay or not, trying to provide some sort of a background to that. As we, where's the graphic for that? Here we go. So as we go forward though, we're trying to think about those periods where we got hung out, you know, far away from where the market is. And so one of the strategies that we're working on right now is to not stay out such a long term with a long contract, but to have essentially a fixed rate for a shorter time, like quarterly adjusted or every four months adjusted. And to do that by buying blocks of power that was sort of overlap with each other. And where's the rest of that? So, whoops. So that you would not be just buying everything at once for two years. So you break up your total load into pieces. You buy maybe a percentage of it at three months, a percent for six months, nine months, 12 months. After that first three months, you're into buying, you know, you have to go out and buy another block there so that you cover your entire load and keep a little bit open so that you can, if there's a big drop in the price, you can pick up on some opportunistic things that you couldn't do before when you're sitting there locked into a long contract. So we want to have an opportunity to both retain some stability. We're not on a daily variable rate. We're still locking in for a period of time. But we're not, it's so inflexible that we can't respond to the market at some level. So this is, this is what's, and this is just conceptual right now. The, and I'll get to what's going on and how we're trying to get there. So what is it going to do for us? And I'm calling it an ESCO services model. Maybe we'll change that term. But the idea is to contract with a firm that would serve as kind of the front end. It would be the ESCO of record. Right now, we're signing up with a Constellation. It's just one fixed price, two years, one year, whatever it is. This, in this scenario, you sign up with a company that's going to give you visibility into those energy purchases that are going on under the hood and access to essentially the wholesale market. That'll give us more flexibility. It will, again, will give us a chance to not get caught in with an unfavorable gap. It'll give us access to more suppliers essentially because right now, we need to find ESCOs that both have the capacity to serve our load, but also have the customer service capabilities and all that. That would all be with the service company. And again, we would have visibility into the purchase from wholesale suppliers who don't care about that point, that part, but they're able to supply the energy. It would also potentially be a structure under which we would have the opportunity to develop new products, particularly what comes to mind is time of use rates. That's something that's going to be more and more popular as we go forward. And that gives you the opportunity to incentivize people to, you know, charge their car overnight and things like that. We can't do that now through, again, the kind of black box ESCO situation. If we have visibility into the element of the underlying price, we have the chance to design rates like that. And further out, and this to me is almost more important, having this kind of structure gives us the ability potentially to purchase directly from generators and actually drive the construction of new facilities, right? Because it would be the same thing where there's the energy. We have to sleeve it in with the rest of the services and the customer service and the capacity purchases that have to happen. So it becomes a retail supply that you can then pass on to customers. You can't just buy from a generator and do that. So this structure not only would give us a response to today's sort of regular merchant purchases, but it also sets us up with the opportunity to go with the next step in terms of really driving renewable energy and going deeper green than we are now. And that could start with the small-scale pilot projects where, you know, say, one or two more aggressive municipalities start out and we've got just a limited number of facilities and we test that out. And then longer term, this would be the opportunity for us to actually bundle this together with new transmission capacity, which is desperately needed for Westchester County. And we've kind of been left out of the whole discussion about that because there's new stuff going into New York City. It's happening up in Albany, but everything's kind of bypassing us. So we need to use the leverage we have to try and move forward on that. So this, as I said, this model opens up the ability to work on those things going forward. And where does that stand now? We're actually waiting for another CCA administrator to finish the first contract negotiation under this format. We are pleased that they're going first because frankly, they're putting in all the effort on, you know, the details and the legal details of fleshing out the new contract. Hopefully, the new contract will look basically like our old contract, but the product piece, which is the end of the contract, which describes the products, will be changing and will have some of those mechanisms in it that we talked about. So we're looking to get a copy of that contract. Both the service company and the other ESCO have agreed to give that to us so that we can start looking at it. And then we can get to the point where in January or February, we can go in front of all the boards and describe this with more certainty because now it's been fleshed out, you know? And hopefully, we can get to the point where by the early spring, we can be developing an RFP to go out and formalize that request, build the new contract final template. And the mechanism for participation, you know, we usually have this MOU-type structure that we do to get everybody on board. Maybe that changes a little bit relative to this new structure, I don't know. And hopefully, to get contracted fairly early so that we can take advantage of timing with this structure. You know, if we wait till just before the contract, then we are where we are right then in the market. But if we leave ourselves a few months beforehand, there could be some playing with the timing and trying to optimize the purchasing. So we're trying to move that along as fast as we can. So that's kind of that backdrop. I also want to, just for the audience and everybody's sake, you know, as they're contemplating being in or opting out or changing supply, you know, you can go to Sustainable Westchester website and do those transactions. You can call us for the ConEd area, it's extension 111. You can also email us. The first line there is if there is a refresh mailing or something like that to newly eligible customers, you're going to have the letter with the slip that you can mail back. That's a fourth way. So that was the quick update, so.
You have a question?
Great, thank you.
I have two questions. One, what is the timing if somebody does want to switch out? How long does that take?
It takes, we usually say one to two billing periods. Because what happens is if your meter read date is just like five days later, it takes time for the transaction to pass through the supplier and then kind of demands, I think, five business days for that turnover. So you're likely to not have it executed before your next meter read date. That means that you will start on the next meter read date.
Got it.
So you're going through that one term and then on the next term. But if you're lucky and there's, say, 10 days before your next meter read date, you might switch right at that time.
Okay.
That gets into the weeds, so we usually just tell people one to two billing periods.
Okay, and then somebody emailed me because they knew that you were coming tonight and they wanted to switch and take advantage of a new water heater. And I think ConEdison told them that they can't get that credit because they are on, they get their gas delivery from somebody else. Is that accurate?
That's interesting, to get their gas delivery from somebody else. So you have to be getting gas from ConEd in order to get this?
Or the, I don't know, but in other words.
I, I'm not, I can't say.
I'm not quite clear.
Who, my colleagues Lauren and Lauren and the Energy Smart Homes might very well know that though.
Okay, so how would I find them so I can answer this person?
Would you want to email me and I'll pass it on? I'm Dan@SustainableWestchester.org.
Okay.
And I would think, I would think they might have a sense of that because they're very tied into the gas moratorium and all the things that are going on and the incentives around that. So that would be surprising because gas is gas. I mean, they're trying to reduce the amount, you know, the.
I would imagine so, but that's what it looked like.
Yeah, maybe, maybe.
And is that, would that be legal? That's my question.
And maybe it depends on like where the funds are coming from or something. I don't know. Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Great, any other questions?
Nope.
Comments? Thank you for coming to provide the update.
Sure.
And we look forward to seeing the process as it moves forward.
Yeah.
You know, over the coming months.
I think it's really exciting. It's daunting, but to get where, you know, it's always important to have that ultimate, where you're trying to get to in front of you.
Right.
And I think this is something that we really need to.
It seems like a very interesting model that hopefully yields good results for the residents of Rybrook and beyond.
Yeah.
Which group is leading that way first? Who's doing it first?
That's Jewel, Jewel Community Power. They've got, CCA is all upstate and across the river and all this. And it's led by Mike Gordon, who used to be on the board at Sustainable Westchester. You know, they're a commercial asset, we're not a profit. So there's like no competitive relationship. We're not, we're not going out the rest of New York to try and start CCAs or anything. We care about Westchester, so we create a lot of, you know, know-how and how to get these things done. It's helpful.
Great, thank you.
Okay, folks, thanks.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, moving on to resolution number two, although I'm not seeing the resolution.
You have to refresh it, but I can read it.
Okay. Considering the appointment of an intermediate account clerk.
Okay, now therefore be resolved that Anew George of 737 Tuckahoe Road, Unit 42, Yonkers, New York, is appointed to the position of intermediate account clerk with the Village of Rybrook, subject to the civil service procedures of state New York in accordance with the conditional offer letter dated October 20th, 2023. And be further resolved that the annual salary is $57,000 with an effective start date of November 8th and a delayed start date of November 13th, 2023.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
I'm moved.
Second.
Well, welcome. Do you want to, why don't you come up? Yeah.
And while, before you're making comments too, if I can. So Anew, we're very lucky to have her joining our team. And she has worked for Montefiore Health System in Tarrytown as a payroll analyst and also for Westchester County as an HR audit clerk. So has some experience in government as well, so, and other jobs as well. But thank you.
Thank you.
As you saw, we run a really tight ship here.
There's no test later.
So you're going to learn from the best. And we're really excited to have you joining us.
Thank you. Let me take this off for a second. Thank you, everyone, for hiring me this position. I would like to thank Lawrence and Patricia for taking all the time to interview me and especially the bar for approving my appointment. Thank you so much. I'm excited to work here and looking forward to grow within the organization as well as to contribute towards the growth of the organization. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Congratulations.
All right, questions, comments?
No.
Let's make it official. Greg?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes. I'd say congratulations, but I think Trish, I think Trish is already putting her to work.
I think so.
No rest for the weary. All right, resolution number three, considering setting a public hearing amending Chapter 240, Section 19.1 of the Village Code regarding prohibiting parking on parts of Sleepy Hollow Drive and Law Ridge Drive.
For the third time.
Again.
Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees shall hold a public hearing on Tuesday, November 14th on the proposed local law, amending Chapter 240, Section 19, establishing no parking on school days from 7:30 a.m. to 8:30 a.m. and from 2:00 to 3:30 p.m. from September 1st to June 30th on the west side of Sleepy Hollow, from Dorchester Drive to North Riz Street and the north side of Law Ridge Drive from Sleepy Hollow to a point 285 feet in an easterly direction.
Yeah, he lives on Sleepy Hollow.
All right, thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
I'll move.
Second.
Yeah, and you should have seen my reaction when Greg got my email when I saw this on the draft agenda. I was like, hold on a minute.
We saw this already.
This was supposed to be the public hearing. Yeah, there was.
Well, we keep handing out letters to the residents, trying to keep them involved and letting them know, so Greg was going door to door for a while and now he's mailing them.
So we will get to this, I promise, so.
I can give you their emails if you need them. I know them.
Please do. That would be a lot easier than, again, going door to door.
I would imagine so. I'll give you my firm names and you can show us the distribute.
At least on the flip side, I've memorized all those.
Any questions or comments on this?
No.
Discuss that we're just setting the public hearing. Did I get a motion?
Yes, you did.
Okay, thank you.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number four, considering declaring municipal vehicles as surplus for sale.
Whereas the Village of Rybrook has vehicles that are no longer of functional value or used to the village and may have a resale value. And whereas the vehicles being listed for surplus are still in service and the current mileage may change, now therefore be resolved that the Board of Trustees declares the following vehicles listed below as surplus with these items to be published in the official newspaper of the village and sold to the highest qualified bidder through an approved electronic bidding process with Auctions International. And there's a listing, there's a plow and salt dump truck, plow, salter, dump truck, two more of them, there's another one, they're all from the 90s pretty much at this point. There's also a Ford chassis with no dump body. And there's a sewer jet truck and a Spartan, a 1995 Spartan ladder truck. And be further resolved that if no bids are received for a particular item, that the items may be disposed of through appropriate means. And be further resolved that merit administrator authorized to execute and deliver all documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
I'll move.
Second.
We sure want to get rid of that ladder truck.
I was going to say, we really, we really want to get rid of everything.
The problem is, it needs a lot of work that exceeds what anyone's recommending that we do.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can we get anything for it?
Well, we, we're very sad.
Well, we're going to find out. That's why we're surplusing it and putting it back out again.
We're very sad to see that truck.
Old reliable.
It has seen us through some difficult times.
Yep, it has. It definitely has. Served us well.
When it had to come back into service and did so without, you know.
It's old, old reliable.
Yeah. All right, well, hopefully we get some good responses like the one we approved at the last meeting.
Yep.
That would be nice.
That would be.
Any questions or comments?
No.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution.
Mayor, can I just mention something?
Yeah.
So it turns out from some of the one car that we got such a great price on, when we notified the DA's office, the DA's office apparently, on those types of vehicles, which they allowed us to be turned over, there's different groups that get a portion of it. So we don't get the whole amount. We. So we don't get the whole amount. We actually get majority of it. But there's, the county will get a little piece of that surplus. If it's ever sold, there, there's an apportionment of it. So I thought that was, never saw that before.
We made the arrests, right?
Isn't that funny?
Yeah.
I, I never saw that. I never was aware of that, but that was interesting. Yeah.
Okay.
Oh, boy. Everybody's got their hand in it, huh?
Well, at least we got a good amount. We got a good share.
Okay. All right, well, resolution number five. Considering an agreement between the Village of Rybrook and KHA New York LLC, DBA Standby for Food and Catering Services at the AJP Senior Center.
Okay, and for the purpose of the resolution, I'll just call it standby.
Please.
Whereas Kevin Almashi, owner of Executive Corner Deli and Catering, who has been the current food caterer and provider at the AJP Center, Senior Center, has sold its business to a new owner. And whereas they would like to continue to provide the food service and catering service to Anthony J. Basil at the Center under the new company name. And whereas the village would like to continue to work with Kevin Almashi and the new company Standby under the same terms and conditions as the prior agreement with Executive Corner Deli and Catering. Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the proposed agreement between the Village of Rybrook and Standby for Food Service, Food Subject to Modification by Council. And be further resolved that mayor and administrator authorized to sign any documents necessary or appropriate to accomplish the purposes of this resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
I'm moved.
Second.
Well, it was, you know, we were excited for our new caterer there at AJP and now we're...
Just a name change at this point. And they sold the business, but he still wants to maintain...
Which is great. And we thank the new owner for abiding by this and sticking with us. And we look forward to working with you. Any other questions or comments?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number six. Considering a request for use of Village Streets by the Blindbrooks School District for a Halloween parade on October 31st, 2023.
Resolved that the use of Rocking Horse Trail, Dorchester Drive and Sleepy Hollow on Tuesday, October 31st from 9:00 a.m. to 10:00 a.m. for the third annual Blindbrook School District's K through two Halloween Parade Event is hereby approved with the terms and conditions established by the Rybrook Police Department.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second?
Motion?
Second.
Well, I will certainly be out there again this year as I still have a student in elementary school.
In costume or not costume?
I will not be in costume. But, but most likely my child will be. It was very cute last year, I have to say. It was very cute seeing them all marching. They, they take a lot of pride in this, so we're, we're very excited to be part of this again. And we thank the residents who live around that area for their patience. As I know it can get a little tough when you've got that many kids marching, taking up the whole street, and they, they really do. But it's very cute.
We have to let the neighbors know. That's my only issue because they really do block it off for quite some time.
Right.
Or if they can keep them, there's no other way out for some of the people.
Right. Perhaps we can work with the school to get some signage up, you know, at the end of this week. Just letting people know. And then maybe we can shoot out a, in our, in our blast.
Yep, sure.
And we, you know, maybe on Monday or something, we can shoot out a blast. Any other questions, comments?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number seven. And I feel like Trish and I knew she should be back. No, I'm sorry. Considering approval of a change order and fiscal year 2022, 23, general fund budget transfer and capital fund budget modification to fund the AJP roof, walkway and boiler repairs.
Whereas the village incurred a change order for additional bracing needed for the AJP Walkway Project in the amount of $5,383.64. And whereas the following general fund budget transfer and capital budget modification to fund the Walkway and Boiler Project as a fiscal year is hereby approved. There's a whole lot of transfers. Basically, it's transferring $750 into that account for the, into the capital project account. And be further resolved that the following capital budget be restated. And there's just a listing of the new amount of that capital project. And again, it's a change of $750. And be further resolved that the board hereby approves the change order in the amount of $5,383.64 for the additional bracing of the AJP Walkway Project.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
Glad that this is moving forward still. It's well underway. And we look forward to seeing the finished product.
Yep.
Any questions or comments on this?
Board has to approve change orders and the board has to transfer because we're a little short in that project account.
But not by much.
Nope. Not by much.
$750. Okay.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number eight. Considering the approval of the fiscal year 2024 budget for the Portchester Rye Rybrook Ambulance Corps, Inc.
Okay, whereas the Village of Rybrook has an agreement with the Portchester Rye Rybrook Ambulance Corps for Emergency Medical Services in which the Village of Rybrook contributes to the chair of the annual budget based on a formula of 75% split equally among the three members and the other 25% based on population. And whereas the Portchester Rye Rybrook EMS Services Committee, at their meeting held on October 5th, the 2024 EMS budget was adopted, includes many service and retention recommendations from the EMS study consultants, resulting in necessary expenses for this essential service. And whereas Rybrook's annual payment share would be $412,929 to be paid in quarterly installments of $103,233. Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves the 2024 Portchester Rye Rybrook EMS budget of $4,426,223, resulting in a Rybrook Municipal Corp. contribution totaling $412,929 for the EMS fiscal year 2024. Period.
Period. Okay, can I have a motion in a second, please?
So moved.
Second.
And, and I would say, it does say it in our backup material, but I'll stress this, that this was anticipated in our budget. We, I remember talking about this through the budget process, that we were, that their budget was going to increase significantly because of additions that they're, that they're bringing to it. But also just, again, continuing to make sure that, that they function as well as they do. That we are very lucky to have this service provided to the three communities. You know, because so many other municipalities end up having to go outside to, to, to hire services. And that can be challenging. It's, with this, we have retention of staff. There's, you know, and, and they serve the community so well. So we, we thank the EMS, sorry, the PCRRB EMS.
That leads an easier name.
It does, for, for all that they do for our residents.
And, and it's been working. So we, you know, this is a five-year retention plan that we have, and it's been working. So we've been able to keep, keep EMS staff there. They're not leaving like they, like we were having. We're not having the difficulty in keeping people. People want to continue to come here. And at $412,000, it's an incredible value in our budget for that type of service.
It really is, and...
And this year also includes a service improvement on the overnight shift. So now we have some additional support there.
Right, which is, which is phenomenal. And we should also, you know, thank you, Chris, for being so involved with this organization and so much that you do to help support them and, and to fight for them, you know.
Thank you.
Getting the, getting them in on, or having the ability to enter into the insurance, I think, was...
That's another one, yeah. We did, we were able to get that statewide, which is great.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Questions or comments?
No.
No, awesome.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number nine. Considering an agreement between the Village of Rybrook and Ramble Engineering for Brook Lane Engineering Services.
Whereas the village administrator and superintendent public works are recommending the board approve an agreement with Ramble America's Engineering Solutions, otherwise known as Ramble Engineering, to provide engineering services related to flooding conditions in the Brook Lane area. And whereas Ramble Engineering has provided an agreement and an estimated budget to perform certain engineering services to establishing stream level parameters for the warning and rain gauge system installed at the Brook Lane and Westchester Avenue culvert and evaluating the possibility of upgrading Brook Lane's street drainage at a total estimated cost of $17,000. And whereas Ramble Engineering is familiar with this area of the Blindbrook, having completed prior studies in this location for other agencies. Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees hereby approves an agreement with Ramble Engineering, subject to the approval of acceptable language by council, to perform certain engineering services in the Brook Lane area for an estimated cost of $17,000. And be further resolved that mayor and administrator are authorized to sign any documents or agreements necessary or appropriate to accomplish the intent of the resolution.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
I'm moved.
Second.
You know, this, this is just another thing that we're doing. This is outside of the NRCS project, but something more that the village is doing to help the residents affected by the flooding. And I saw that, you know, we, we like the approach that Ramble is taking to this.
And they have a lot of data for that whole Blindbrook watershed, which is one of the...
They certainly do, from, from the work they've done with Ry.
Yes, exactly.
And so it's, and we look forward to working with them. Any questions, comments?
That's public information, right? All the levels and what's going on?
Yes.
Yeah.
Everything's public, sure. And there's, the stream study, I think, is even on our website, the one that they did for the prior study.
I think you said that, right, yeah.
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number 10. Considering designating polling locations and hours for the village election on March 19th, 2024.
Resolved that the voting machines owned by the County of Westchester shall be used at the next village election to be held on Tuesday, March 19th, 2024. And be further resolved that the voting machines, if they're not available, the county can go to, authorized to go to paper ballots. And be further resolved that the polls at each of the nine village election districts shall be open from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. on that day. And be further resolved that polling places be hereby designated for the respective election districts as follows. District 20 is the Portchester Middle School. 21 is the Portchester Middle School. 22 is the Rybrook Firehouse. 23 Crawford Mansion. 26 Portchester Senior High School. 27 Crawford Park Mansion. 29 Crawford Park Mansion. 30 Rybrook Firehouse. And 31 Belfair Meeting House.
Thank you, Chris. Can I have a motion in a second?
Motion?
Second.
All right, pretty straightforward. We always do this. I was asked recently by a resident why we have so many polling locations.
It's a good question, but we do follow the national elections. That's what we try to keep it. So people, in the past, the board is a, we, while we could consolidate election districts, the boards in the past have always wanted to keep them the same as the national elections, so people know where to go.
Right. So do we not set the national election?
No, that's not done by us.
It's not done by us?
Yeah.
Got it.
So the village has just chosen to follow the lead of the other ones.
And I think that's the right move. Questions or comments?
Trustee Epstein?
Yes.
Trustee Fisher?
Yes.
Trustee Heiser?
Yes.
Trustee Morlino?
Yes.
Mayor Klein?
Yes, thank you. Resolution number 11. Considering approval of the minutes for the meeting held on June 27th, 2023.
Now therefore be resolved that the Village of Rybrook Board of Trustees approves the meeting, minutes for the meetings, the meeting held on June 27th, 2023.
Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second, please?
Motion?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. All right. Administrator's report.
Okay, I do have a few items. It's been a weird time because it seems like every Saturday it seems to be raining.
That it does. Not this weekend.
But not this weekend. We refuse to let it rain this weekend.
This weekend will be the first, I think, the last weekend to not have rained was eight weeks ago.
Labor Day.
Two months ago, practically.
But, but we are, I'm actually, we're all looking forward to this weekend. This is one of the most fun events, I think, for a lot of people to go to. It's a lot of laughs. We have the annual How Halloween Dog Parade. So dog, bring your dogs in costume and parade. And there's judging contests and there'll be other games and things to do. Also, the, the Humane Society will also be there as well to be a part of the whole event. So there's prizes. It's a lot of fun. That's at 10:30 this Saturday. And that's followed by our first trunk, trunk or treat event, which is going to be from 12:30 to 1:30. We're starting a little small this year versus opening it up with all kinds of vehicles. We're going to do it with village vehicles. So we've issued kind of challenges internally with the departments and we're decorating some village vehicles. And people are going to come out there and we'll do it in the parking lot of Pine Ridge. So we're going to, we're, we're kind of starting it off small and, but it should be a lot of fun for everybody. So residents can come out and enjoy the day. The Rybrook Fit Walk is on Saturday, November 4th, beginning at 9:30 at the Rid Street School. And that's, that goes through the whole Country Ridge area. And that's a wonderful event, followed by mini golf from 12 to 4 p.m. over at Pine Ridge Park. So there's a lot of stuff going on.
Plenty of time to do both.
Yep, plenty of time to do both, yes. And some of these we had to do, we're doubling up on because of all the rain we've had. We're just trying to, trying to fit it in.
Activity is activity.
That's right. Get people out in the community together. The National Resource Conservation Service Program on Brook Lane, Wyman, Wyman North and Rock Ridge is going very well. We like that they've given the village more, more, more control over the process now through the recovery program, so that's going very well. So we have our appraiser, appraisers already sent letters out to the areas. They're sending, setting up the in-person appraisals for it to go through the homes with the residents. setting up the in-person appraisals for, to go through the homes with the residents. The residents, I know, so many have called. They're very excited that, seeing that this is all moving forward on a good pace now. So they're very happy about that. And, um, also, I'm gonna ask, I want to thank Greg for going and coordinating the Bowman Avenue cleanup. That was something that the board listed as a priority, because that's such an area that gets so much garbage every, every, it seems to start the day after we go in there and clean up with the groups. But I know Greg also wanted to thank some of the people that turned out this past weekend. You know, we were very pleased on a, not, not, not in the most wonderful weather for people to come out.
Now I'm amazed that you didn't have a rain date.
So thanks to Greg for coordinating and being out there, but I know Greg wanted to say a few words.
Yes, good evening, and yes, we did have less than ideal weather, and, um, we did discuss potential rain dates, so the, actually, the original idea was that some sites were going to go to October 14th, but because it's rained like the last seven consecutive Saturdays, we didn't want to push it back and risking that we would go through the same thing all over again. But surprisingly enough, we had a lot of volunteers, which I definitely, I was, um, surprisingly shocked in a good way. But so, but I just want to thank everyone, again, who did help with this together, because this truly is a team effort, um, starting with the town all the way down to our volunteers. So again, I just want to start off thanking with all of our town partners who helped coordinate this event along, and we, we participate at Bowman, but also Portchester City, Rye, Village of Marneck, and the town itself also does their own respective sites. I also want to start thinking with 800 Westchester, because, um, we, when we do clean that road, we do block it off, um, for safety reasons. But 800 Westchester is always nice enough to allow them to use that private road. I know, I can admit, I'm certainly guilty of using it, um, at my leisure certain points, but we all should remember it is a private road, and they do not have to allow us to use it, but they do, so I do want to start thanking them. I just want to thank our village staff, including our Rybrook Police, again, who are manning there for a couple of hours to make sure that we are, um, safely being able to pick up garbage. Now, we had Sergeant Chris Rue and, and Police Officer Paul Oposy on, uh, Saturday helping us, as well as our DPW crew. They help out with pretty much every event that we have, and, um, they wouldn't be a success without their efforts, starting with our, our DPW foreman, Paul Vincy, who's always, um, great coordinating the crew, as well as Mark Goldstein, and also Michael Anzi with the labors that were able to assist, um, on Saturday. And lastly, I want to thank, um, all of our volunteers, as that we had unexpectedly huge turnout, and that is in large part in credit to both the school districts. Um, Teacher Julie Hensley, who is the, um, staff liaison for Roots and Shoots, was great in bringing out pretty much the entire club to help us. As well as in the Portchester School District, uh, they've got Key Club, which is Santos Abila, who's the guidance counselor there, and Elizabeth Messina is one of the teachers there, who are their, uh, staff liaison. So I want to thank the three of them for getting their students out to help us, because that was a huge help. Um, and we also had a gentleman come from the city of Rye with his son, so that was actually unexpected surprise.
How many people did you have, Greg?
Probably, honestly, I guess, didn't count exactly, but we had in the high teens.
Excellent.
Yeah, which is, um, not what we were expecting, because again, it would...
Given the weather.
Yeah, it rained on us the whole time. I mean, I was drenched from head to toe, but, um, it was definitely worth it, because it, as the administrator Brad Berry said, that that road, um, always is dirty, as pretty much probably from the moment we leave there, there's people putting garbage there. So it's definitely a huge hotspot that we're always happy to hit to make sure that it's as clean as possible. And we even had also our town supervisor came, Gary Zuckerman, who stayed with us the entire time, so I want to thank him as well for, um, coming and braving the rain with us. And so, um, yeah, that's pretty much the gist. Uh, we got a lot of garbage. I did post on our social media sites, if anyone wants to come check it out. Um, but definitely, we are, will be looking forward to the next sustainability event.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you.
Anything else in the administrator's report?
Nope, that's all.
All right, then, moving on to old business, although I think this is really new business.
New old business? Well, new program with old business?
Yeah.
Why don't I kind of summarize why it's on the agenda?
Yeah, please.
Want me to do that? Okay. So a couple of years ago, we had...
For the record, this is electric vehicle charging stations.
Thank you. So a few years ago, if you recall, we, we spent some time going out, meeting with, um, in different sites with some of the vendors. There was, uh, some really good rebates that were out there, and, uh, we picked locations, and those locations are in the backup here, uh, on the agenda page. But basically, we got all the way to, we were ready to kind of start the program, and the state funding stopped, so we weren't able to continue. So we had to put the brakes on and kind of put it on the shelf. So now what's, now what we've learned is Westchester County is giving a substantial discount, as well as other discounts that are available, uh, through NYSERTA, ConEd, and then with the county, it looks like almost all the funding for Level Two chargers, um, would be available for reimbursement, for installation, for use. We'd own them, set the rates, get the software. And the county is having a meeting on it on Thursday, and they're asking people to come with locations. We've already met with them. Greg and, uh, and Michael's already met with them to get a head start, uh, a few weeks ago, so to show them the locations. But we are, um, looking for feedback to make sure the board still wants to proceed with this, and if the locations we've identified are still appropriate. So these are, again, Level Two chargers. There's NYSERTA discount for the charger itself. There's a ConEd discount for wiring and the engineering cost, and Westchester County's providing 50% off of all the work. We're going to learn more about it on Thursday. Don't have all the answers yet.
Okay.
But, um, we want to make sure that this is still something the board's interested in. We have received letters from, uh, residents, I think, three or four, saying, if you're going to do it, do it with the DC fast chargers. Um, much more expensive venture that we don't have funded. It's a lot more expensive, and they're not eligible for all the discounts, so...
Why wouldn't I, that's a good question to ask them when you go to the meeting.
Mm-hmm.
Why wouldn't they do that to enable more people? That was the gist of all the letters?
Yeah, we asked the county too, and they said, nope, they're only doing the Level Twos, um, which is typical for municipal lots, but they are the slower chargers, there's no doubt. Um, but we did ask the questions. We called the company to find out, you know, what other, what is it not, what is included, what's not included? And, and Greg talked to them today, so the NYSERTA, the NYSERTA rebate for the charger itself is not eligible, uh, for the DC fast chargers. And, um, the, all the county pricing isn't available, so if you're going to do that, it's going to cost, there's more infrastructure that has to be done, and higher charger, um, more work has to be done to provide the, the juice that's needed for those chargers. And, um, there's no county pricing, so you'd have to go out and probably do a bid unless we could find like a, uh, piggybacking contract or, um, something like that cooperative agreement. We, we wouldn't be able to just go out and just pick a company and do it.
Right.
So that's something that we'd be doing on our own.
Short-sighted, though. That's my only, uh...
I don't know. I'm out of my field comfort level. I'm going to go learn more about it on Thursday. It's your typical chargers for municipal lots, but they are the slower of the chargers. But we, I know we can't afford the fast chargers.
No, I understand that completely.
The question is, do you do it at all or not?
Great, what are the ones that are at Crawford Park?
Level twos.
Those are Level twos.
And who provides those? Do we know?
The who provides them? The count, I mean, they did it through other, some of the rebate programs.
They did it, but they hopped on it the second, the last round.
It was a different program that they jumped on. This is, this is by far the, the best rebate programs we've seen, because it's covering 100% of the cost.
Being ignorant on the subject, how long does it take using a Level Two charger to charge a typical car?
You're asking the wrong person.
Six hours, about. About six hours, from zero.
Question whether it's even worth doing it?
It's, that's a choice.
I think it's worth, I think it's worth attending the session and learning more about it.
But I think it, I think, exactly. I think it makes perfect, because they'll get some, it's like when you fill up a tank, you don't always fill up a whole tank. You can fill up a small shot again.
You're kind of, you're topping it off. You're topping it off. You're topping it off.
Right, no, no, I'm not ahead of you on that one, but it, I read the letters from the, um, the people that, um, in the village that said, if you're going to do it, but I understand why you're saying we're not doing it, but my point is, why can't we convince the people that are funding it? Because it makes no sense to put in such slow chargers when the, when the goal is to...
I don't know enough about what the, the delta is in price increase for them, so that's something I'd have to learn more about.
Okay, so I guess we have to convince them to do it.
Yeah, and I don't know if it costs them so much more. There's, that might be the reason. I don't know.
The labor's the labor.
One of the things that I'd be most interested in personally, in looking at it, is what programs can we use to get the infrastructure in place, because we know it's coming. You know, so to me, does the infrastructure for this underground and bringing it to, the service to it, does that in any way help us to different types of chargers later on if we want to?
Right, and that was going to be my question.
That's one of the questions we want to find out.
That was going to be my question of whether we can, whether we can provide the, provide the correct power to that area.
Maybe start with Level Two, but if you swap them later...
Exactly, well, that...
When another...
That's one of the things I'd like to learn more about.
Exactly, which is why you have to go there, but the other issue is if we're giving up, and it's not possible to swap it out. We're giving up all the space that we've identified as the best possible locations, and then if you can't swap it, what do you do?
Mm-hmm. Those are all good questions.
Okay, and I will leave it to you to...
Okay, and I'll, I'll, I'll bring back and share the information that we like.
Excellent, thank you.[1542.34]